Hi, Jan.
Hey, Chris. Hey, Bob. Now, of course, we managed a daytime meeting on what was sunnier than it was supposed to be. But.
Rain predict, the rain. Nick did start at two, but it switched to nine o'clock tonight. So.
Yeah. Well, we'll take it. That's fine. The wind's picking up. We'll get something. Hey, Ernie.
Hey, how you doing?
Ernie.
All right. Um, we got a minute or two. And then we'll jump in.
Water. I'll be right back.
Okay.
My connection is going to be a little dubious again with the wind.
How is it that wind affects your internet? That's strange.
You know, the only thing I can tell you is that the, the, I go through, I have. Wavecom. Because we can't get anything else. So it has to be. Or whatever.
Yeah.
And the tapper is on Blood Hill.
Yeah.
And the only thing we can think of is on a windy day, the trees are blowing. For something. So that it's actually, you know, the trees around the tower.
Gets in the way.
No. It must get in the way or something.
You gotta get Comcast or.
We can't.
Or out there.
Yeah, I did, you know, easy fiber, $10,000 doesn't really justify EC fiber.
Yeah.
That's how they would charge you.
Well, we have learning. You know how long our driveway is. So.
Uh. I've got it. My driveway is my driveway is the same length. My own driveway is the same length. And I think they chat, they, they said it was going to be $2,000.
Plus the underground.
Well.
On the other side, yeah.
Yeah, it would be underground. Well, I have, I have overhead wires, bunch of overhead wires first and then underground.
Yeah. All right. I think we, uh, we got a critical mass here. We might as well get started. Um. So this is an official subcommittee of the planning commission. Uh, with the three members from the planning commission being Ernie, Chris and Jan. Um, and then I will. Admit people as. As they come in. We have a warned agenda. Um. We can, uh, talk about the agenda or move to approve it and then talk about it. Can somebody?
Oh, I'm.
You gender.
Wait, what do we?
Just move the agenda and then we can talk about it.
Okay, I moved to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
All right. Thank you. And since we got moved and seconded, I agree. That's a. That's all we need. Okay, so, um. We have time for public comment on the agenda. I might. Say that, uh. Since we're brand spanking new at this subcommittee, you can, you can chime in now, but you'll probably learn enough from the next hour of conversation that. It might be more productive to, uh, chime in either during the agenda items or public comment at the end, but. Uh, I will adapt. I'll open it up. Uh, with that. Uh, with that in mind. Okay, um, I'm gonna. Go with the same policy that, uh, or try to get to the policy that the select board follows, which is. When people sign in, I would very much prefer to have a full name. So Alec, uh. First name Alec. That's all I see. I did admit you, but, uh, what we'd like to is see who we're, who's coming in more than just a first name, please. So let's do that moving forward. Um, okay. Next thing on the agenda is select officers, which would sounds a little grandiose for this, this small group. I'd say more, uh, sort of. Select. Select a moderator. Uh, did you raise your hand, Ernie?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, I'm, by the way, just to, in general, when we're doing Zoom and stuff like that, I, I'll raise my hand even, you know, if somebody's talking, but. They can finish. Uh, you don't have to stop talking just to address my hand and, you know, or a thing like that. Uh, it's just.
Yeah.
It's, it's just easier if I raise my hand. Um. When in, in the land use, um. Um, subcommittee. Um, we went with a moderator instead of having a chair. Because. After five years of having a chair and then chairs on the subcommittees and stuff like that. Um, and, and basically the chair tended. To be, uh, pretty domineering. Um, and so I, I think the moder, I mean. You have to have somebody who will keep track and keep the move, the, the, the discussion going and recognize people and stuff like that. But I don't think. It has to be a chair. I think a moderator might be a appropriate thing, especially for the subcommittees, you know, I mean, I'm not going to say. Uh, this, none of this holds for the, uh, for the planning commission itself. But I think for. You know, I, I'm open to other ideas, but I mean, I think that that's what we did with the planning. The, the.
No.
Land use.
I'm, I'm fine with that, Chris. What do you think?
Well, I'm just gonna say, I, young, because you have been, um. As chair, you allow, you have the. Internet capacity, I guess. To allow people on. And you have done so fabulously. So far.
Yeah, I think we can separate that, that piece out, the, 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 the Zoom. Admin. Can be, can be separate. I mean, I, I have no trouble continuing to do that. It's basically you have the login information for the planning commission. Uh, Zoom account. And that makes you host and you can deal with it. So I, I have no trouble just separating that out from a moderator function and continuing to do that. Um, so. I, I would agree with the, you know, moderator facilitator, whatever you want to call it. It's. Schedule the meetings, get the agenda together, make sure we're doing some productive things, stepping through the agenda. Um, and I guess with, with that definition, I would ask. Or nominate Chris to take on. If you're, if you're willing to take on that. That role.
So can I just, before we get into the, the difference between a chair and a moderator? So, uh, we also, because, you know. With the OML and everything, we have to take minutes. We also have to decide. Minute takers. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Ernie, how did you guys differentiate between a moderator and a chair? Whether there's.
The chair, a chair. A, a chair generally represents. The, um, the committee. As well. And, and I think that's inappropriate. At this level, because I, I mean, I've seen it not work at this level. I mean, there, there's, there's not many people on the board and we're looking for opinions and stuff like that. And. I, I saw the, the system abused. Uh, I don't expect it to be abused. I mean, you know, I'm, I, I. You know, I, I, I'm willing to accept a chair, but I, I like the idea of the moderator at this level better because.
Yeah.
It's just talking.
Chris, Chris, to the definition, sorry, Ernie, to the definition of a chair, a full. Formal chair, Robert's rules of order and so forth. You. The, the chair. Is a little bit separate from the content of the conversation. They, they manage the flow. Everybody is supposed to talk, speak to the chair, not to each other. It's, it's a.
Right.
Distinctive role to Ernie's point, you're, you're kind of. Acting like the embodiment of the group and it's a, above it and a little separate from it. So I, I think that's, that's overkill for, for what we're talking about here. We want. The person who's moderating to be an equal member.
Yes, absolutely.
There, you know, not standing off to the side and just watching what's being talked about.
On top of it, I, I will say that on one, on the other hand.
Right.
Also, I suggested it because we have at least one person on, on the subcommittee. The, the, the land use subcommittee that has a tendency to get overbearing and stuff like that. So I kind of wanted to. Sort of keep them corralled. Um. But, but I don't think we have, I mean. Yeah, I, I, I like, I love the way, uh, the planning commission is now running. I mean, it's because it went from being, I dreaded meetings to I'm really enjoying the meetings here. And I like these little subcommittees too. So, uh, on, I want them on already. Um, and, you know. I, I'm, I, I like this whole way things are getting done.
So can I also ask Jan and Ernie? So at this point, it's the three of us. You know, the, the planning commission created this subcommittee. And the three of us as, uh, members of this, of the planning commission, but. Are we not also going to actually reach out into the public and add members to this?
So that's, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. And we have it on the agenda. Um, later in the agenda, but. That is certainly the intention. Uh, for this subcommittee because it's, you know, it, the, the content. Says we should get input from various groups and.
Right.
We should then. Uh, you know, it's perfectly possible that one of the, one of those ad hoc members is going to be the note taker or, you know, so. Jeff, Jeff Lubel is chair of the affordable housing subcommittee. He's not a member of this, of the planning commission. So. Yes, I think to some degree, this is whatever we're talking about today is temporary until we. Get our feet under us and get a full complement of members.
Right. So just for now, moderator sounds great.
Right. So how about it, Chris? You willing to take it on?
I'm gonna vote for you. So you're kind of stuck with it.
Just, just any time. Correct me where we're going.
Yeah, I think it's much more egalitarian. I, I think it is really even, even at this level. Certainly when it's the three of us before we get more members. You know, we, we can choose not to do the raise your hand and, you know, we're just, just don't be rude and interrupt and, and we can have a fairly informal thing. So. Uh, it's pretty safe.
So that's what we were talking, that's what we were talking about. That. We're kind of looking for more free form. Sort of discussion group of having, you know, us and the members of the public. I thought was a great idea. Um. So, no, so, so just, just as a fallback. If this. If, if it gets like. Suddenly, you know, I, I know how many people are here today. But if we do get to the point where a lot more people like the upper leveling group wants to join in. Um. Is there, you know, we can, can we actually change it at that point? Or once we set, set it as a moderator, I mean.
Well, we can, I mean, it's, it's totally up to us. We can adjust it as we want. Certainly if we were doing something, you know, we can be very informal. In the subcommittee and then if we had a, you know, a. A public hearing where we wanted to really get input from lots of people, we could crank it up a notch. And say, we're going to do more formal process and really call on people and have time limits and so forth. So we can definitely adjust it as. As appropriate to the. To the, uh, you know, what we're talking about and, and who's there. And certainly adjust it when we add members. Ernie?
Yeah, just as a, um. Uh, a model. You know, the town meeting is a formal. You know, open meeting law governed, you know, assembly. And it's run by a moderator. It's not run by. And it's intended for discussion of, of a large crowd. And, and so, you know, we, we, we were not even at that stage. So, you know, there is no chair of the town meeting. It's the, it's a moderator. And I think, and, and that's a little of what, what I'm kind of think aiming at is, you know, it makes it, you know, um, um, Jan said egalitarian, which is exactly. The right thing here, you know, there's, that's exactly what I'm aiming for and why I like the moderator. Um, like I said, it's just to keep order. Um, you know, and remind people, you know, to how to behave and stuff like that, but it's not, it's not a representative of the group.
Yeah.
Um. So that, that.
So do you wanna, just let's experiment with it if you're willing, Chris. I'd say. Take it on and see how you do and, and I, I'll leave, I will keep the Zoom admin piece.
Yeah.
Um. If you want, I'll, I can take notes. I can be note taker until we get more members and then we can see if someone will take that on.
And so going forward on agendas for these next, do the three of us, I mean, I mean, obviously the, the membership of the subcommittee. Do you work out the, I mean, typically. Under a chair, the chair kind of starts the, I mean, you talk about what you want on the agenda, but the chair does kind of send out. So who's going to set the agenda for each meeting? I guess it's my question.
You can, I mean, I would just, I would just turn it and say you're. You would. Be the lead in terms of taking the initiative. So, but because open meeting law allows. Members to discuss beforehand agenda and meeting time, then you can, you can put out a really rough thing. To the three of us or whoever's members at that point and say, here's a proposed agenda. And we bounce it around and settle on an agenda and then that's what's warned.
Okay.
So you're, you're just taking the initiative to send out that first. Rough seed that everybody builds on.
Okay.
All right. And so over to you, Chris.
Okay, so on agenda item number four is background information collection. So Jan, you're gonna have to sort of give me an idea of what you meant by that.
Well, yeah, and this is just, this is absolutely just an idea that I put on, um, as a placeholder. And I was thinking, Chris, you know, when we were. Looking at the. Upper Loveland case. And there was a whole lot of reading. It was like this PUC rule and this state law and this. Not even specific to the case, but all these reference documents. And it just seemed to me that there was a whole exercise if we're going to be. Talking about this and thinking about it. That we need to collect. References. And put them in a useful place, whether it's on the website or somewhere. And if we, the committee that's working on this. Do that work? Then. You might as well put it in a place where it's accessible and useful to everybody. So, you know, I would just picture somehow a repository. Of, and we can ask the town clerk who seems to be fiddling with the website now. To say, you know, there's, there's an affordable housing subcommittee. Little section of the website. From a long time ago. So let's get a solar sighting subcommittee. Piece of the website. And you have a little tab that's references. And. You can start sticking. Documents on there. You know, not, not opinions of, you know, I'm for this or I'm against that. It's. Reference documentation of laws and statutes and PUC regs and, you know. References.
Like files.
Thinking.
Like files and maps.
Could be map. Yeah, I could be a place to say.
There's a, there's a, a rye or reference to that.
Yes, yes. So what I would just, I would just distinguish, I think, distinguish between. Useful references for the topic. And any. Case specific. Opinion or, or material so that, so that we can keep it clean and factual and, uh, and not. Uh, in the, in the realm of arguments for one case or another.
You're, you're talking about statutes, um, you know, uh, court opinions if those, if there are any that are pertinent, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Under the assumption that, that, um. Whoever wants to submit something needs to put it in the packet because don't we have to before it just gets put up on a town website? And it's part of the subcommittee. Wouldn't, wouldn't somebody have to? Submit that? Because it's a.
It's a good, it's a good question.
It's, it's probably safer to do that.
Yeah, I would think so. So if, so if any one of us or any of the members. Or the public or whoever wants to submit something. It would get, and so we would have to know when our meeting is, have it submitted. Um. To the subcommittee. And then. Um, we can keep that on the. In the, in the file.
Yeah, I, I think we can check. I, I, what I don't want to do is, is end up burdening Pam with. You know, hundred page packets because we're putting in a lot of reference docs. We can, we can check an OML question that just says. Cause we're, we're not. Uh, we're not necessarily putting it on the agenda. Of. The. Meeting. We're putting it in a. A reference location on a website. So is that really an OML issue? Um, so I just want to ask from the, for the Zoom. Admin point of view. Um. I just admitted someone who's just a phone number. So I just broke my own rule and I don't want to do that too often. Uh, so we, we need names. So can seven eight four seven?
Hello, I'm the one that's on the phone. That's why I called in to tell you who it is. I don't know how to put it on there.
All right. Well, that's fine. That's fine, Linda. Okay. Now we. Thank you, Linda. Uh, Alec added his last name. So thank you very much, Alec. Uh, so I think we're all set and I have.
Planning Commission adding his name.
Oh, that's me. So.
Yeah, I know. So add your name.
Jan Lasgab, but, uh, I don't, if I start renaming the planning commission Zoom account, I'm.
So you keep. All right, that's it.
That's me. Um. So I have Jack Cushman with his hand up. Would you like to?
Yes, I'll be brief. Um, I, I'm interested in your thoughts about the, a webpage and how it can be of service to your work. Uh, on the two. Uh. Groups that I chaired for a temp, well, for a while, chair of the solid waste committee and article thirty six. We got a lot of advice from the select board. On. Do's and don'ts of webpage operations. It's not clear to me whether the planning commission. Has its own kind of entity. Can completely disregard that or whether it'd be a good idea to regard that. But the one that sticks in my mind. Was that we were not to use. Webpages. Whether or not on the. Select board site or our own, which can be linked from that site. To, uh, solicit or accept input from the public.
Okay.
And. That constrained its usefulness considerably. Um. But I just advise you to be careful. There's a, there was, I don't know if it still exists. A lot of resistance on the. Select board, including from our current chair. To. Using websites. Even some resistance to existing websites has been observed such as the energy website. Or even the conservation commission website, which is. Highly useful. And is on a statute, but run by a statutory group and can be a model. But I'm just saying. Please check carefully. And also please let the public know early on. How we may submit material so that it will be preserved, will be considered. Um. And, and, and who do we send it to? Do we have to come in person to a meeting? How does, how's that process going to work? Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Great question.
Chris? Chris?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm so used to.
It's good. That, that by itself is healthy just to flip things around. Um. So I, I, I think it's a very good point and we need some guidance. Um, because I have heard the, some pushback and it is that issue of. Uh, is it content for the meeting? Is it input from the? Public into the committee's work? And things like that that have to be. Follow the, follow the rules. Um. So I think we should ask. Very specific and it's probably counsel. Um, but just that question, clearly to Jack's question, how does the public get things? Into the committee? I think the answer is that goes through the packet. Anything that wants to be officially in front of the committee as input. Goes through the packet and then it's, it's preserved in the packet. Then as a separate question. Can we set up? A. Reference. List on a website. That, that has whatever the criteria is. It's only statutes or it's only reference dot, whatever it is. I still think even within pretty limited bounds, it could be useful. But at the default would be go through the packet and, and we'll see if we can pull some stuff out and put it, make it available.
I, I'd think that keeping what Jack's in mind, what Jack just said, though, uh, we could. Yeah, you know, you're keeping. We could, we could accept it the same way the select board accepts. Uh, input from the public. Which is through the packets and all that sort of stuff. Um, there, there's two separate issues here. One, keeping things, um, available. Or at least the. The subcommittee to, to have as materials to refer to. And. Others are, and the other part is. Getting, you know, input from the public. Uh, I don't think those are necessarily. Um. Uh, ex, exclusive. Uh, of each other. I think, you know, somebody, the, the, the public has something that's useful to us. Um, we can just choose and say, this is going to go, we can, we can look at it, review it. And if it, if it's, you know, um. Uh, useful, uh, data. Or useful information. In a long term, not just an opinion or even, well, some opinions might be useful like this too.
Mm-hmm.
And just put that, we just keep it on the, and, and just, all we have to do is sort of keep. Keep. Track of the provenance of it, you know, who sent it, when it was sent, sort of, you know, and, and those kinds of things are part of record keeping anyways. Um, you know, and. I, I don't, I don't really see that we have really a big problem here. Well, I guess what, what, what the concern with the, the. Um, what, what chair was saying, it's like what she was saying and so on. And what's, what the problem is, is that. They don't want. Things to turn into a, and, you know, off the record. Uh, conversation. That, you know, is gonna. When I, I talked to Jen Prosser in the Secretary of State's office, uh, a while back. Um, and the. Way she. Sort of put it together. Was. Anything that, um. Is going to lead to a decision. Help, help resolve. Uh, an issue, lead to a decision, help create a decision, however you want to phrase it. Has to be, um. Treated. Uh, under the open meeting law. It has to be, you know, discussed. And so on. And that's, I think, if people are just. Suggest, putting information just. So what I'm trying to say is that we just have to just make sure that anything that gets, that, 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 that stays. Um, that's not just a matter of record because of minutes or something like that. Um, anything that's, that's discussed or useful or kept. Has to be. Sort of processed through a meeting and. Um, you know, and, and what way, whatever way we decide we're going to call it accepted. That's how, how, how it happens. So if we.
Yeah, just Chris, as your Zoom administrator, Linda has her hand up. I'm not, Linda, do you, do you want to speak or is that leftover? All right. I'm gonna assume that's leftover. Uh, go ahead. Yeah. So, Chris?
So. So the other thing is that when somebody writes to the select board, it's very specific that, you know, you send it to Miranda CC. Select board and you have their email addresses. So I guess my question to us would be. If. You know, once the subcommittee grows. Um, does it seem appropriate that Pam is just going to be our? Go to person and that they shouldn't be CCing anybody else just, or just, just. Send any.
Yeah, I think as long as it's. I think we could say. That to Ernie's point. Um. The inbox. The email inbox is Pam. The, the processing function of whatever comes in is the subcommittee so that we look at it and we say. Oh, that's a useful reference. Let's put it on our place. Um, but it comes through us to make that judgment. But anybody that wants to submit something to this committee. Send it to, it has to have Pam's email on and it says solar sighting subcommittee. PC solar sighting committee, whatever. And it goes to Pam. And then we can confirm with Pam. And I, I talked to Pam today and that's one thing she asked specifically was. As soon as we get our feet under us. Get some guidelines for these subcommittees, you know? When do they meet? How often do they meet? Uh, you know, how long before, you know, warning things. But so if it's that, if it's. We're gonna collect packets. We're gonna use Pam as the inbox. We need to be clear about that and. We need to be clear about that and tell, and talk to her about making it work.
Yeah, cause you know, I, I get, I'm assuming that we're going to, when we get to item, so we're only on background information collection. So that's sort of what. Our topic is now is how we're addressing information coming in, where does it go? And who's processing? Well, uh, again, we established that Pam that all correspondence. So let's just make sure we have this right. The background information collection way right now is. Pam Mullin. Receives. Anybody who, any member of the public or any of us receives information for the packet. And we haven't necessarily established, I, I assume we're going to talk about that maybe. Five or six, but we haven't really talked about. You know, when our meetings will be, but assuming that we, we're kind of follow what we did before with, you know? Get it to her, you know, the four or five days before.
So. Once it's a regular meeting compared to a special meeting, that's the distinction. It, special meeting is the whole twenty-four hour thing and, and Pam today and, and Brandon both said. They prefer everything not to be special meetings because then everything's last minute and not predictable. So they would love us to get to a, a regular meeting and I would, I would. At from the, from the planning commission's point of view, the goal would be. The planning commission goes back to regular meetings, which is second Tuesday. Monthly. And then the subcommittees are expected to meet in that, in that gap in the middle. So that, so that they would meet every couple of weeks. You know, or every month staggered from the full committee. But so we'll, we'll get into that and, and figure out those meetings. But it's certainly the request of Pam to, to get it regular uh, as soon as we can.
Okay. So going back to the background information collection, we know how we're going to administer it, that it's going to go through the packet. And that's all going filtering through Pam. And that, that comes in as correspondence. For that, for that meeting. And. I think Jack's right that should find out about. You know, typically of the Select Board, any information that comes through gets just grouped under. What happened in that pack, you know, what? If anybody has that kind of information, you're returning to it, it's in the packet anyway. But I think what you are suggesting is that there should be a way. That somebody should be able to open up a file and that's maybe something we can talk to Pam about. You can link it.
Yeah, cause that's the, my concern is. If all of our useful information is only structured by packet date. Oh yeah, we had that and they're all concatenated into one PDF.
Totally get that.
You know, if we can have the ability to take six documents in a packet. Pull three of them out because they're useful references and stick them somewhere where you can find them. In a, in a logical search by topic rather than by date of packet. That's, that's what I'm craving.
Yeah, I'm totally agreed because there are so many times with the Select Board. Information that, you know, something was in the packet and you have to go through. You know, thirty different Select Board meetings before you can remember which, which Select Board meeting it was in. So I totally get where you're going. So I guess it's going to just be a question to ask. I don't know. Do we need counselor or can we just ask Pam or somebody that?
I would start, start with Brennan, uh, maybe Brennan and Marcia. Uh, and, and say, you know, here's what we want to do. We agree they come through the packet. It's, we could eat, we could say. The, the packets will be the, the superset of all this information. It will be in a packet. All we're asking is a mechanism to take some subset of the packets and arrange them differently. In an accessible differently, keywords, whatever it is. Uh, in parallel, we don't take them out of the, but they're still in the packets. We just want to duplicate somewhere.
That's a great idea. I wish the town would do that more often.
Well, let's, let's demonstrate it's useful and then maybe it'll go somewhere.
Well, the thing is, it's, it's interesting because it's sort of how courts. Uh, opinions are sort of ordered, you know, they come in, they're all random, they're, you know, they're. They're filed and different, every, every single thing is different. But there's an extensive indexing. Um, of stuff and, and identification of, of, of cases and stuff like that. And you can even use. Buzz uh, keywords or searches. Now, we're not going to, I don't think we're going to get that into it, but at least, you know, an index of.
Yeah.
Documents that are there and, 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 you know, by, we have a, a subject index or, you know, something like that. So that then you says, go to, you know, August twenty-fourth, you know, um, like, uh, solar sighting. Subcommittee meeting. Um, and in that packet, you'll find uh, item number three. And that's, that's what you're looking for.
Right. Okay.
Just about a record keeper.
Yeah, Chris, so Norm has his hand up.
Oh, am I?
Yeah, you're the, you're the one who called, answers people now, Chris.
Well, I don't, I don't know what you can, I don't know what you can see. So I, I will, I, if it's a Zoom.
She was ignoring me. You, you US, you Trump there. No, 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 just kidding.
I'm so used to having Yon do it and he does it so well.
Should I talk?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I sure, I won't talk, Chris.
Does the town have anyone with the I T capacity to do this? It's obvious that. Just about any structure circa twenty twenty-three should have some way of tracking and retrieving information. That's why a lot of the committees have created their own on their website. So they can retrieve information and then. More easily provided if it's needed again, if it's needed for discussion, et cetera, et cetera. There's endless software that allows you to retrieve that. You know, the document is a whole subset of databases. Is there a person? Does the town have that capacity uh, uh, to manage it?
Yeah, I mean, Chris, I, if, if you would take on just the digging in a little bit, I would start with Lily. Lily's the one that's playing with the town website. She seems capable of adjusting the website. I don't know if she has somebody helping or she's doing it. Um, you know, I would start with some combination of Brennan, Lily and Marcia. Describe what we want to do and see what the options are.
No, we've had an I T person for years. I, but I don't know if that's, if, if Lily has taken that over or not. But I, I mean, we know that there are linking capabilities. So I mean, the town, if you just go to the planning commission site, you'll see things like maps. Town plan that, that will link you to that. And I, I guess, Norm, the only thing that we were, we're, we're still not certain about as far as starting a website. We're, we still hadn't determined the longevity of this subcommittee. We're, we weren't sure until we started, we. It just needed to evolve first. I don't, I don't know if it, it was a necessity to even consider a website. If this is just sort of a short term or a long term, we, we just haven't gotten to that.
Yeah, but it could.
Doesn't have to be a separate website. It can just.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to say.
You know, it's.
Yeah, boom, right on the, it could be to Ernie's point, a annotated linked table of contents that sits right on a. Planning Commission Subcommittee, boom, and that's, that's what's there. Um, so.
I like the idea of table of contents. I think it's a great idea. Okay, so um, any other public comments?
Oh, let me mix that go away.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to just go back, make sure I think we've covered background information collection. I'm going to. Wait a minute, this is the problem being married. So you want me to contact Lily and find out. Um, what our options are of putting something on the, on the.
Yeah, I'd say it's asked Lily that question, you know, so if we sent her a document, can she link it three ways? Pam clearly can put links on websites because she's the one that puts the video up in the right place and puts a link to it. Um, so between Pam and Lily and I T. What's our, what are the logistics? And then maybe it's a Martian or Brennan, what are the O M L, make sure you don't do this uh, kind of caveats?
You've been talking to those two about a lot of that stuff. Do you want to take that on with them since you're, you have other? Things you're discussing with them? You want to throw that in there or you want me to do it?
I'd rather pull it out in separate. It's, it's a nice, simple logistics one and. It'll get, it'll get all mucked up in, in the stuff I'm talking with them about. Keep it clean and separate.
Okay, so I will contact Marcia and Brennan and find out. What, you know, what Jack was alluding to, you know, what we can and can't do from, from that perspective. Okay. Okay, so no other public comments and I think we're done. So number five on the agenda is generating. Input for committee priorities.
And just to describe what I meant writing that, we had talked about. You know, specific things like, should we do a lessons learned from the Upper Loveland? Uh, project that, that, so that comes under this topic, generating input for our priorities. So, uh. Reviewing certain sections of the town plan, the, the default solar as, you know, the whole town is default solar. Is a statement in the town plan. So there, there are various priorities that this committee could talk about. Um, the one actually that I mentioned in the full planning commission meeting, the Select Board's recent action. To uh, request that the town man, any solar project that comes before the town. The Select Board requests the town manager to intervene and call a hearing. Which logistically simply is saying the Select Board wants to have party status. On all solar projects. So that's a.
Yeah.
We could, we could do that. We as the solar sighting subcommittee could recommend that the planning commission does a similar thing. But that may not be our top priority. So you know, those are three or four ideas for priorities. And now the agenda item is. How do we get input? Cause there are five or six other things we could do. Uh, and we want to, we want to get those on the table.
So I'm just going to say two quick things. By the way, in the town plan, under actions, uh, thirty-three A. It actually says as part of the action to participate in section two forty-eight process. So, you know, it's, it's already a given in the town plan that. It was anticipated that the town was going to be at all levels, were going to be involved. Two four eight reviews.
So, yeah, what is.
The what?
Well, I just, it's one of those many things that requires definition. What does be, what does be involved mean? Does that mean party status or does it mean writing a preferred sighting letter?
Yeah, no, so, so here's a question that I want to sort of ask that, that is more specific to um. Creating priorities. So when we were having, I'm so sorry, I meant to go back and look at our minutes. And when we were talking about this, I often find that a lot of times committees are formed by the Select Board or other. Boards. And while it's like the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is pretty obvious, right? And solar sighting seems pretty obvious, but I, it's almost like sometimes you, you, when you lack a charge. Like what are, is there a way where we can actually define? Because it, I think it will help us set our priorities. I mean, solar sightings are pretty big subjects. So as solar sighting committee. You know, our charge, we never, we didn't, unfortunately that we didn't come up with a charge for our.
I think to, to speak to them, to speak to the minutes of the full commission. What we said to kick, kick the, kick the ball over to the subcommittee was. Part of the subcommittee's charter was to define their charter.
Charge.
And so, so that, I mean, and legitimately, it's almost. We're generating info, input for committee priorities is how I wrote it on the agenda. But it is perfectly legitimate to say, uh, generate input. And, uh, you know, and I would. You know, that's probably a, a, you know, top of the list for the next meeting's agenda would be finalized charter. Uh, and we can take input and bounce it around here and then put it on the agenda, but it's ours to define.
So I'm sorry that I, I found this today and I wasn't able to put it in the packet for this meeting. But in two thousand fifteen, Vermont actually put together a solar sighting committee. And it was fascinating with people who were involved. There was nobody from Norwich, but I think somebody from. Two rivers was, or yeah, two rivers was included. Um, and it was really interesting to read their preamble and what their, what their whole idea of what they're talking about in solar sighting. Um, so I printed it out and they went through all the different. Um, I think. What they thought were really the important factors in solar sighting process from. You know, planning from the, on the municipal level to actions to regulatory. Um, and how they all apply. So like I said, I'm sorry, I didn't print it out, but if anybody wants to take a look at it. It's called the Solar Sightings Task Force in two thousand fifteen. And again, it's outdated. Um, it was, it actually came out before the two seventeen, two thousand seventeen um, changes in the P U C. Regs, but. It's, I, I looked at it because it was going to, to me, it, it. They're doing the same thing we do, we're trying to do, accomplish, but on a state level. So on a town level, it sort of applies this, you know? What were the factors that they were looking at? You know, state goals versus town goals? Land use planning, but they had some really fascinating things that, that again are a little outdated, but. Um, they go over the regulatory process. And they explain their reasons why they think that. Actually said a mechanism is needed to facilitate mediation of a community neighborhood concerned with projects outside, I'm sorry. Read the wrong one. Enhance customer service and access to information P S B for those seeking to participate. The two forty-eight process. So. What my takeaway on what they were doing is that they, they have said it very clearly that. Someone who's new to a two four eight process, it can be so overwhelming as we can tell. That the Upper Loveland project was overwhelming for the people in that neighborhood. So I, that's what I'm wondering if. If we sort of look, take the same way that they approached it and say, okay, what are? What is it that we need to be looking at? Regulatory or, um, you know, the town, taking out the town, but I, I, I didn't print out there. There were so many pages, I only printed out certain parts of it. So I'd have to go back, sorry. Toby disorganized, but they have. Aesthetics and environment. They go through all the, they go through all the different things that they thought were really important parts. That make up the solar sighting I concept. And I think it really does apply really well to what we're doing.
Yeah, there's no, I don't see why we need to redo it from scratch if there's things like that. Nor, Norm has his hand up.
I thought that the, I, I don't want to get into the Upper Loveland battle, but. In any detail, but the Upper Loveland project was approved by the two revs out of Crete. They reviewed it, did they not? And they.
They, they signed a preferred sighting letter.
Okay. They signed a preferred letter. Uh, we have to assume that they use the criteria, if not the twenty fifteen, the twenty seventeen, whatever. Revisions there were, that's one of their roles is to review projects. And my understanding is that the state level, at the P U C level, the town is always a party. If it chooses to do so, so what.
If it chooses to do so.
If it chooses to do so. So what, part of what you're talking about is the level of activity that the town is. Is or should have i- in this process, but. There were mul-, there are multiple tiers of review and each one of those tiers have very clear. Criteria that have to be met, met before they will approve. And at the state level, there are multiple other divisions, natural resources, et cetera, et cetera, all of which have to check off. As part of the P U C process of whether it meets their criteria. So. You don't have to start at scratch. What you have to do at a first level is understand what reviews and what processes and criteria. Already exist in these processes. Uh, and then, then you can start. So I don't want to make a speech, but.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I think that's all true. I, what I guess to to be on, stick on the, on the. Agenda item or even the specific of the um. The charter or the charge of this group. I think one piece of the charge of this group would be to. Recommend to the planning commission or recommend to the planning commission and conceivably the select board. Uh. The, the processes or how the town should be involved in solar sighting. Projects like one whole subset could be, we recommend that the planning commission gets, uh, you know, uh. Pro-party status and and that we do thus and such, or that's whole, one whole section of kind of the process. And then there's a whole other section that would be, this committee would recommend any. Uh, necessary adjustments to the town plan or the zoning regs. That relate to solar sighting and we would take on the responsibility of. Holding public hearings and having discussion about that. So those are just a couple examples of potential. Parts of our charge.
Okay, so you, I'm just saying that you should familiarize yourself as Chris alluded to. What already exists and and see. At the first level of how many levels of checks and balances and review there already exists. Otherwise, you end up with redundancy or recommendations that are counter. To the regulations that already exist for citing.
Anybody else? I I was gonna respond to that. I don't know if anybody else has a comment. So. Norm, I, I, um, tell me if, I I don't mean to be point of word myself, but. Um, I, I don't know if you've been sort of listening in on any of the planning commission meetings. So. The reason why, uh, so, so the reason why Upper Loveland, we wanna do a forensic. On Upper Loveland and why it pertains to why we're even, why we even have this subcommittee form. Is that it has come to our knowledge that while we think we have ourselves covered. In um, the way the town plan is written, the Upper Loveland solar preferred site. Definitely demonstrated that we don't have our together. And it was most unfortunate, most unfortunate to the neighbors who had to go before the PUC. And most unfortunate for the town to discover that, you know, we're missing an incredible amount of information. That doesn't protect. Members of the town. And I think that that's what we, we found that that was a priority for us that. And and Jan has found out that we're the only town out of two hundred and fifty-six towns in the state of Vermont. We are the only town that has a blanket preferred site status. And so. This is definitely created a. Topic of consideration. Um, and why, again, historically, why we actually thought that this should be. Um, reviewed, so to speak. It doesn't mean that, you know, again, after the subcommittee recommendations, you know, we're not sure where we're gonna go. But. It. It was a point of concern that we have outdated maps from two thousand eight that were never generated. Um, we have what's called a ridgeline overprotection plan map that is from two thousand eight. It's a draft and it never, it never amounted to anything. So I respect the right of the public to um, expect that we're going to have. Have up-to-date information and that if we're gonna hand off a preferred site letter, that we're basing that on, on information, on well. Developed information provided by the town and and employees who are supposed to have put that together. So, so that's the, the, that's why we're talking about the forensics that it was a very frustrating. It was a very frustrating process for those guys. And I I think it's really unfair for someone to have to go through something that that. We didn't have our act together, so to speak. So that's why, you know, what are we generating the priorities from? And that is, you know. It includes whether or not the town should be an overall preferred site status. Um, and I think you'll, you'll be hearing more. But anyway, I go back to what I'm saying about. Um, and again, I apologize because I just found this this afternoon that. And I could put it together.
Put it in the packet for the next meeting, clearly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But again, what I found was. The, their review process was really, um, well. And they have, you know, they, they talk about, you know, what it is, the, with the subject, and then they have findings, and then they have objectives. So it was a sort of a historical examination and then findings and then action, you know, what I, what, what do you wanna do from that? And and recommendations. So I just thought it was a really good way for us to sort of look at that. Take their same format and formula and sort of apply it to us. Now, what is it that we're looking at? So that was it. So the public, anybody else, Ernie, Jan? Anybody?
We, I mean, I, I think, I think we could. Um. So we certainly wanna be open to input. I think we clearly need to put the cart before the horse, which means we need a charter. Or, you know, we, this committee needs to know what we're doing. And theoretically, we would. Draft one and then bring it back to the full planning commission and say, this is what we're planning to do. Do you like it? And then full commission would say, yep, go with it. Uh, so I think that that clearly should be. Top of, top of the agenda going forward. Um, and then a very specific. Public input idea is some kind of public hearing around Upper Loveland. Uh, comments, which would just simply be, you just gave a good outline, Chris, of of the kinds of things. While your, your maps weren't defined enough, your town plan said thus and such, just things that would help us. Prioritize.
Right, so I just, I I forgot that I left it up on my computer. So it does say overview and their charge is. Act fifty-six of two fif-, two thousand fifteen, section twenty-six G, whatever. Created the Solar Sighting Task Force to study the design, sighting and regulatory review of solar. Electric generation facilities and provide a report in. Form of proposed legislation with the rationale for each proposal. And then it goes on who the membership is, and it's pretty impressive who their membership is. But that's sort of their charge. And then it goes on, public comment, oh, they have lots of public comment. The solar sighting task force also heard from many stakeholders. Who verbal and written public comment. So those are the kind of things to me that are. Um, and then they just go into historically current trends in solar generation in Vermont. You know, there, there's their. Sort of their preamble. But again, going back to what their charge was. Um. Although we're not, I mean, we could base it on the town. And I don't, I'm not very sure if we have to go that far. Create, created the, sort of like to study the design. Citing and regulatory review of solar electric generation facilities. And I think we just ought to sort of take that in and provide a report in a form of proposed, which I like that, what was legislation and the rationale. Proposal, so.
You could, you could take most of that and and substitute the word town for state and and. And if we're gonna do different things appropriately for the town, because we don't have the authority to do a whole bunch of stuff. That the, that the state or the PUC does, but but clearly appropriate to the town, we'd be doing roughly the same thing.
Right, but it's a pretty simple, simple chart. I mean, regulatory review in, in our case. Since. Uh, our bylaws and regulations don't really apply in this particular case, it's still, it's still all kind of works.
No, Jack. Sorry, Chris, Jack, Jack just has his hand up.
You there, Jack?
I am, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, uh, uh, would you like me to go ahead? I'll be quit.
Oh, yeah, no, totally. We're, we're, we're.
Thank you. Um, so, right, I I just didn't mean to interrupt you. Um. So, uh, first of all, I totally agree that this, uh, report should be. Put on record in whatever fashion you choose to put things on record. Um, secondly, I would note that it is a legislative report, which was intended to produce legislation. And I would ask, was any legislation proposed on the basis of this report? And if so, did it pass? This is the sort of a basic question when you see a legislative report, because a legislative report. Um, is sometimes a political document and requires a political decision. Um, so, uh, that's all, that's all I wanted to say about it.
Hmm. Yeah, no, Jack, I I totally get what you're saying. And I, it, to me, it wasn't about the task force itself and the content. To me. I was just sort of looking at their, the way they were approaching um, the idea. And they, you know, again, they did. They made a lot of recommendations and the answer, I can't answer your question. All I know is that they were saying at the time that this report was being written. At the same time, the PUC was rewriting the two thousand seventeen. Um, the PUC regulations, all solar citing, et cetera, et cetera. So the two four eight. Review was gonna change dramatically and they knew that. But their recommendation for some that I noticed was that. Um, a lot of things that are in the town plan were saying that, you know, that communities should absolutely be much more. Involved in solar sighting. And that's where we found, a- and again, they bring it up very clearly. That this town, um, because we are now just sort of this one big amorphous preferred site. We have essentially lost that ability to be involved unless we are engaged in in the two. If, unless we participate in the two four eight, which we haven't been. So. Um, so yeah, some of their recommendations, I think, have been maybe on a case-by-case basis, but I'm not quite sure. I. I could not actually take this and say what legislation came out of it. So, because it it's so old. But a- again, at the same time, a lot of stuff was going on at the PUC level. I'm sorry.
Well. But it's also really a question of, for us as a template or to help us. Come up with our charter and so forth. It's just a useful template. I mean, we're not. Our equivalent to legislation would be changes to town documents, changes to town processes. And so on, and and it'll, it could help us draft our charter, but we will have very different. Content output.
Yeah, the recommendations for, for whatever. Yeah, and I, I, again, um. So I will, I will, um. All right, here's a good example. So I I'd love to email it to you guys. I'm gonna put it, send it to Pam. And then it goes in the pack, in our next packet.
But right, so as long as it's copied, Pam references this committee and says, put it in the packet for the next meeting. Then we're legit.
Right, and but in the meantime, since I'm telling you two, if you guys wanna look at that. And when we come up with the agenda for the next time, I'm sorry, I didn't um, have a more specific outline. It's the kind of thing that I was just saying, it might, might help us in that, in prioritizing.
So we should, and I can make a note of this in, in terms of the minutes, that we have an agenda item. For the next meeting, which is to, you know, get quite specific about drafting our own charter.
When you say charter, a charger charter?
Charger, I I think I mean the same thing as you do, you know, what, what's the purpose of this committee, what's our output, what, you know, uh, how are we gonna do it? But but more, what is, what are we being asked to do?
Right.
What task are we, what task are we taking on?
Right, and then I'll, I'll, you know, throw that, that. Document as a, as a means to sort of maybe use it as an outline or something. But anyway, Jack, he's, Jack's got his hand up?
He does. Is that leftover Jack or no? Hearing nothing will consider it leftover. Okay.
Okay, so, um, so going reviewing number five, generating input for community priorities. So I guess what we're gonna do is. Come up with some info, some, some ways to, to write our charge.
Y- yeah, I just, I wonder whether we should, um. Ask, you know, pretty much put out an open-ended. Uh, uh, request to the, anybody who reads these minutes, these, these minutes are gonna get posted. We can say if community, this is the general topic of this committee, we are. Recommending uh, changes in documents and processes that relate to solar sighting in Norwich. Um, and we would welcome input on. What people think should be our, the priorities on that topic. Uh, please submit to. Uh, this committee, care of Pam Mullin, blah, blah, blah. Put it in the minutes. And we'll have stuff in the packet for next meeting that are, whatever ideas bubble out of that.
Right, because, you know, we're gonna get to subcommittee membership next. So I don't mean to, sorry, Ernie, go ahead. I've been.
You finished, I, 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 I'll remember.
No, so I was just saying that when we get to the, um. You know, we haven't really talked about the subcommittee yet, and I think that's gonna be an important part of this. Um, because I think as other people are gonna be, you know, we know that some of the Upper Loveland people wanna be involved. I don't know if they wanna be on the. Subcommittee or not, but, um. I think it would be.
To that agenda item if you want, I mean, if we.
Or yeah, or well, kind of, kind of mix it. I just wanna make sure Ernie hasn't made his point, but, um. Uh, oh, should I just miss my point? Ernie, go ahead, cause now try and filter back.
Okay. One of the things I, I was just wondering it right now is, you know, um. Is much of the public, I mean, they're, the, 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 the people in the Upper Loveland area. Um, have a specific reason why they're involved and 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 might be particularly well informed. But a lot of other people might not have a clue, um, in the town, because it hasn't touched them yet. Um, and it might be a, a, a good idea, and this is, and this kind of goes with our trying to draft up a charge. Is. Um, sort of saying, it's something along the lines of, I, I, I'm, this is not exactly the way you phrase it, but. We're thinking of doing a charge. Um, it's about, you know, about, about soul sighting. Um, and the reason we're doing this is because, um, we actually experienced. And again, don't, this is not verbatim, but we actually had to experience on the planning commission. Um, a, a relatively, yeah, yeah, complex situation with. Uh, a, a lot of issues and some of it has to do with the fact that the entire town is considered a preferred site. And, you know, it's the only town that has, has, is, is, is. Uh, is, is set up that way and so on. And so I think we're gonna need to give people an idea why. We're doing it. Of course, that all will lead into the charge itself anyways, so that, um, we were both informing people. What we want and sort of why, you know, we, we're already starting to lead into what the charge is gonna be, but we're also telling them. You know, giving them information so that they can make, um, you know, intelligent, uh, yeah, well, make intelligent suggestions. And to, to, yeah, to us as well.
Yeah, it, it kind of relates to, to what I asked before in the commission meeting, you know, what. Be clear about what problem we're trying to solve. And so if we, if we say as part of asking for input. Uh, he, here's, here's what we were struggling with previously. And so we're trying to solve that problem with, and this subcommittee is a mechanism to help solve the problem. And we're looking for your input and, uh, Rob has his hand up.
I may go ahead. The, uh, I would resist, uh. Soliciting involvement from specific groups. That is not a, a means of arriving at any kind of a consensus. Of the town or the interests of the town. So if you are saying, Chris, that you want to. Uh, specifically invite, uh, people who, uh, objected to the Upper Loveland Conference or. Project, solar project, that would be extremely prejudicial.
That's all. No, no, they requested, that's probably requested. It wasn't just to be on the meeting. It had nothing to do with us asking them to be on the subcommittee.
Yeah, I got that impression perhaps.
Well, no, and Chris, I think it was, it was a little stronger than the way you put it. There was a. There was a specific statement that said, if, if you're taking, if you're taking member ideas, we'd, we'd love to participate. It as, so. We can move into the membership question, but I, I think it is. It's a good question. I'm not sure I, I, I agree with what Rob's saying. There's certainly. You know, we could say, oh, we, we think it's valid to have a member from the energy committee. A, a at-large member and, and somebody from, you know. I don't know, what, what do people think in terms of how you would?
I totally agree. I don't know what Bob, but. I'm glad you said that, Yon, because we're going to specifically say. You know, we want somebody from the energy committee. Does that make it prejudice? I don't think so. So the, somebody, there has been a, there, there's somebody from Upper Loveland has. Just requested that they are aware of this. So. I don't know, I have no idea if any of them want to be on the subcommittee. I was just, I didn't mean to say it that way. So, I mean, we were hoping that, I don't know, I think we were opening it up. We weren't trying to solicit anybody in particular.
Well, that's the, that's the topic for this agenda item is, is. How do we want to? I, well, with the assumption was with just us three, we don't have the, you know, we want a bigger group. Involved. Now, we could say it's the three of us and we're going to have kind of, you know, ad hoc. Specific things, not members per se. Certainly, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee is a very good example of. A planning commission subcommittee with. A non-planning commission members doing really good work. So that I thought was the model we kind of started with. And so what do we think is, is useful for this committee? So, but, but just to be specific, the, the letter that we got from Mary Gorman around. Putting input into this meeting. Number three, if you are looking for volunteers to serve on the committee, please let, please know that the neighbors contesting the Upper Loveland. Road solar installation would like to have a spot. So, so that is a specific. Membership related statement. That's, that's on the table for the committee.
Ernie, oh, sorry, Jack had, Jack had his hand up first. Do you mind, Ernie? Sorry.
Thank you. A couple of questions to address. Who names the members of this subcommittee? Is it the subcommittee? Is it the planning commission or is it the select board?
The full, the full planning commission, Jack.
Thank you. Secondly, along the lines of this discussion of whether or not this group of. Self-interested residents wants to represent their self-interest on a formal committee by joining the committee. I would find that a shocking thing. And I'm sure it would gather a lot of attention. It would be the equivalent of putting a particular contractor on a Tracy Hall subcommittee. We've off, I, I believe there's even an application form for applying to groups for. Permission to, or for the privilege of being on a committee. And I think it asks about conflicts of interest. And I think it would be highly problematic to take somebody who is engaged in a specific policy decision by the town. With a direct financial interest in it because they assert that it affects their property values. And with a. Firm point of view and a very. Highly energetic legal representation. Boy, what a mistake to put them on a, a committee who's attempting to write the town plan. Which is a document that uniquely involves the future of our town. I can't conceive of such a thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Antall and I'm on Union Village Road and I'm a U C C minister. And I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things that have been said earlier. It was said, you know, the question was raised, what problem are we trying to solve? And in some ways, I think that's the most important question. Of this discussion. And I would just urge this committee not to look back at the. Upper Loveland sighting. Interactions as the problem you're trying to solve. Instead, it's, it's my understanding and, and I think everybody else on this call understands what I'm about to say better than I do. That there is some kind of commitment. Expressed, I don't know if it's by the planning committee or by, by some vote of, of the, the, the town here a few years ago. Or if it's a, a state vote that has a goal for every town in Vermont to reach. By, and again, I don't know if it's twenty twenty-five or twenty thirty. But I would think that, that citing that fact is, and seeking to fulfill it. Would be the goal of having a committee like this. And, and then the second and very related thing to that would be. If there was anybody that I would name to be a fixed member of the committee. It would be somebody under the age of eighteen who lives in our town. We need, we need to be intentional about recruiting, seeking and giving voice to young people. I, I'm sure everybody on, in this conversation is well aware of. The contribution young people have made, not just since Greta Thunberg has spoken up, but even prior to that. And most recently in Montana, where it was the lawsuits against the state of Montana in favor of the Montana constitution. That allowed young people to bring into question whether or not climate change can be considered. By, by the state there. Thank, thank you.
I just wanted to just make sure that we, we're not losing track of. The fact that everyone, you know, has a, a. We have to be very careful about how we. Discriminate about whether somebody can be on it or not, just because of what their. Positions, political or philosophical positions are. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's, that, I mean, the, the planning commissions had that problem. For a number of years, there were people that were not allowed on the planning commission because of their, because of their opinions. And, and that's really. You know, we can't, we can't really discriminate based on, on, on somebody's opinion. We have to. Look what that, you know, it's more important what they add to the. You know, do they help add, you know, is, is, is their opinion added a, a level of diversity? You know, is this person, you know, going to provide goods, help provide solutions? You know, do they have skills? Because you can only pick so many people to help, but we cannot. We really can't. Pick based on particular opinions. Just be, you know, that, that might be within the realm, you know, that are political or something like that. Someone who wants to get on the, the commission, the, 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 the group, for instance, to upset it or make it. Ineffective, no, you, that's, you know, and because they don't believe that this sort of thing is even appropriate. That's a different kind of opinion, but someone who has. You know, somebody who's opposed to. Sighting on one hand, or somebody who's opposed to keeping the, the, the sort of blanket. Sighting arrangement that we have, those are, because those are, those kinds of positions, I don't think are valid reasons to keep somebody off. Or out of this, the, the, the group.
I totally agree with you, Ernie, and I, I would, I'm sorry, I saw your. No, the only thing I want to say to continue with that is quite frankly, I really intended this to be. Every single person who lives in this town should be qualified to be on any subcommittee. So I kind of think, you know, if some, I, I just, I can't imagine precluding anybody other than the fact that they're a taxpayer. Or they're homeowner in this town or they're eighteen years old. I wasn't, you know, and again, Bob, the, the, they just asked. You know, when our meeting was and they said, is it possible? I'm not even sure at this point, if, so Yon, I have a very interesting question. You know, and Ernie, you know, we started this subcommittee so we could have this conversation. And so, you know, I, I'm sort of, sort of seeing that. Something as simple as this, that maybe we should just keep it as the three of us and let public participate. I'm not quite sure. I, I, I just thought this was just going to be a very low-key holistic approach to discussing things. And so I don't want to start to attack for, you know, being politically, like, I'm trying to set something up. I don't really, really want to go in that direction.
Right. Well, I think to, to Ernie's point. You know, what, what Jack said strongly was someone. We don't want to engage someone with a firm point of view. Well. Everybody, everybody has a point of view and it's, it goes from either rigid, close-minded, I'll never change. To wishy-washy, I don't know anything about this and I don't care. We. I'm perfectly okay with a firm point of view and energetic engagement. You have to be. Open-minded enough to listen and you need to be trying to find a solution to Ernie's point. Other than that, you know, then I, I think we need to be. Able to let, let, we, we want a diversity of views. It's actually in the statute for the planning commission. That it should include a diversity of views.
As I may, that means that the planning commission does not recognize financial conflict of interest as a barrier to participant. Participating in town officials' recommendations to our legislative body.
Just to address that specifically, Jack, I think this. Subcommittee's conversations on solar sighting will have no effect on the Upper Loveland project. That is, that is separate. It's in the, it's in the rearview mirror enough. Anything we do in this committee is not going to affect those landowners' land values. This, it may very well affect mine or yours or somebody else's who ends up with a. A preferred site next to them, but it's, we can't identify who that is right now and it's, it's not that project because that's in the rearview mirror.
So I'm sorry, I'm going to call point of order, point of order, point of order. So. All we're talking about is solar sighting. I'm not quite sure how, this is a subcommittee on solar sighting. I'm not quite sure how we digress to talking about assessments. We're talking about the process of solar sighting. So I'm not quite sure how we went astray in thinking that. Somebody is going to have conflict. We're not even setting policy. We're just talking about it. So how does that segue to what this subcommittee is going to recommend? How does that lead to assessment? I, I, I feel just, this is why I'm calling point of order. This is a, our subcommittee charge is solar sighting. That's it. And, and so the people in Upper Loveland, which I have no idea anything about how they. Have anything to gain or lose by being on this. They just had experienced solar sighting issues. That's it. So am I correct on that group or not? Ernie, Yon?
I, I, I think you, that, that's exactly correct. You know, I, 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 I think just as, as, just to throw out. A solution that we can discuss, maybe it's, it would be, it is appropriate to. Pick a number of people to be on here as members. You know, we've got three. Planning commission members, I don't know what the right number is, but, but just sort of pick a number so that we have something. Somewhat objective. On which to, so that, to, to limit, just to keep the group. Able to be, able to actually come to decide. Well, we're not supposed to be coming to decisions. We'll be coming, as you just said, we, we. We're here to gather information and gather ideas. You know, the planning commission is the ones who are going to actually write the, write the. The regulations, if, if any. If, if any regulation is going to be written based on this information. And that, that has a statutory number of people on it, period.
And this, and the select board approves those. We may come up with recommendations to process, say, we may say, we recommend that the planning commission. Request party status on all solar projects or something. So the planning commission could decide to do that themselves. But any change to the plan or any change to the regs is going to go through the select board. But I, I do really like. The, the comment that was made, that Jim made a minute ago, just because it flips my head around a little bit in terms of the problem to be solved. It is, it, it is a perfectly legitimate option. To say that, that the problem to be solved by this committee is to. Assist the town in meeting the renewable energy goals set forth in the state plan. That require X number of, of kilowatts of renewable generation within the town. I mean, that's. That's a very different problem to solve than I kind of had in my head. But it's a useful rethink. To say, oh, we, you're, you're not going to get anything cited if. We're all at louder heads every time. So the purpose of this committee is to help us cite things. That's a, that's a legitimate statement. You know, and, and then it brings up the, okay, here's the things that have been. Bones of contention. We need to be clear. We need to say where, we need to not shove it down people's throat, whatever. But. The underlying goal is to, you know, not have the entire. State of Canada on fire or the, you know, floods coming down the pipe, you know. So I, I, that, that was useful to me. We could, should probably ask, because I, I'd like the. Get a young person involved. We should probably figure out what the minimum age is to be a committee member.
I, I, I just suggest that eighteen, since that, you know, that, that they have. Rights that are automatically built into. You know, built into, in, into. Once you're eighteen, you could be on, you could run for office and so on and so forth. I'm, and I, I understand Mr. Antall's. You know, idea of getting the youth, and I, I completely agree too, by the way. I mean, I would, you know. I just would not want to suddenly somehow be, be finding ourselves, well, we can't listen to a particular person because they're not. They're not registered or they're not, they're not capable of signing a contract or any of the other legal things that somebody under eighteen can't do. I don't think there's a huge gap between somebody who's on eighteen and let's say sixteen. When it comes to, to thinking, especially thinking about the issues that are related to this, so.
To Ernie's point and maybe just the, the number I think is useful. I mean, we're, from a membership point of view. If we want to have a few more than us three, then I think we're not. We're talking five or six total. If we, this should not be a nine or ten member committee. That's just unwieldy. You can never schedule meetings and, and so on. So I think we're, you know, to me, that's a ballpark number, call it six or something to, to, to think about. And, and, and we want. Open-minded people who are welcome to have. Firm points of view, but not rigid points of view, who are looking for solutions that relate to our charge. And let's get our charge written down so people can, can. Say, hey, I'd like to help with that.
And I think, I think it's, it's, it's important if we, if we make it clear. It's, there is a, the charge is to actually accomplish dealing with solar sighting. Not, not to undo and say we don't have solar sighting at all. I mean, anyone who's. Coming at us from that point of view, really is just undoing the, the purpose. Altogether, we have, it, it, it's inconsistent. So I think, I think that, that.
No, that's, that, that's a key point. If, if you say the charge is to deal with, you know, to, to accomplish solar sighting. In a, in as, you know, consensual or appropriate way for the town of Norwich, then. We don't want a member who doesn't agree with the charge.
Right, exactly.
So, so I, I know this sounds, and I get a point of order to myself, but I'm going to bring it up because I, it will, it will be relevant to what we're talking about. So in our town plan, it actually says, using Act one seventy-four mapping methodology. You know, out of twenty-eight thousand six hundred acres, they only have it set at six thousand three hundred. you know, out of 28,600 acres, they only have it set at 6,341 potential acres are available. But then it says right here that 67% of the area is already currently under forest. So our other reason to have this committee is that the PUC has already changed the regulation on deforesting land. So a part of this committee was also to make sure that we have kept up with the regulatory issues revolving around solar siting. And so now the, the PUC has made it clear that there are different, we, the town of Nor, the town plan has not kept, kept up with the regulatory, the state regulatory changes. And so this is not about, and, and by the way, can I also point out that in that solar siting committee task force, the last thing they said is that these are evolving documents. And so is our town plan. And we have been remiss in not keeping up with regulation. So I think some of this, that's exactly why I said, part of that format that they followed was regulatory. And I kept wondering, why is regulatory important to us? Realized why, because we haven't kept up. The town plan hasn't kept up with, they don't want deforesting, you know, 10 acres of land for a solar park. So that's, that was another reason why we were doing this. It's, it, I, I guess I'm going to say a part of the charge I would like to see, say, stay into it is that these are, what do they call it? Moving, what is it? Something is. Not moving target, well, not moving targets. Town plans. Living documents. And, and our town plan is a living document. And yet I haven't seen, and we know from, from the planning commission, that it's our responsibility to look at the different parts of that document and, and keep up with it. So I, I don't want anybody to think that just because it was town plan was written, done deal. It's not. All these documents need to be maintained and updated and reviewed. That it may be, maybe what the town plan was written, that members of the public would like to review it for different reasons. And, and I would like to hear from other people. So again, I go back to the members of the committee, which is what we're, I, I think we're on subcommittee membership. I am perfectly fine with just keeping it the three of us and opening it to the, for public comment or having more people on this subcommittee, having less. I, I, I'm open to anything. I just want to deliberate with members of the public to talk about this. I, I really don't want to get bogged down in who's on, who's the member, who's on the membership.
And that's what I, I think you're right in the sense that this is an advisory group to the planning commission. So what is, what special privileges do you get by being a member? You know, if this group, if we are going to be open to letting people talk and participate, and if we say, oh, we want to craft, you know, a revision to this piece of the town plan or something. And, and we ask other people to participate, you know? It's not particularly, it doesn't matter whether you're called a member or you're simply, you can come to the meetings and, and chime in until that gets to be crazy unwieldy. And, and then, and then we may need to delineate it. But for now, it may not be that important.
That kind of gets us back to the, to the town meeting moderator, all that sort of stuff model that we talked about earlier. You know, everybody, nobody, at the town meeting, everybody, the only requirement is that people be, be citizens to participate. That's it. I don't even know if you have to be a citizen. I take that back. You just have to attend the meeting, you know, and, and just not be obstructive. But, you know, I mean, if you have people who, who come, you know, and just want to come for one meeting or they, they just want to have a say and, and so on and so forth. You know, that, that's, that's totally valid as far as I can, I'm concerned. And I, I'm wondering if, if, you know, it's necessary to have any sort of formal member, more membership than, basically the three of us are, the job for us is simply, when we hear stuff, you know, we, we bring it and it's just better, you know, three heads are better than one. Of listening to, to, you know, the public and bringing back the information that we, we get to the, to the whole committee, all, all planning commission.
Yeah, I agree because I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I think Yon just said it too. I'm, we're not making policy. We're just discussing and, and reviewing a living document because it's the responsibility of the planning commission to do that. And I just want public input. I would love to hear more public input and I am open to hearing anybody's point of view. As a matter of fact, I, I, I think that would be, it would be, what would be called? It, for us not to open ourselves to all public point of view would be, what's that called? What would that be? What?
Discriminatory.
No, not just discriminatory. I'm like, I want to hear, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly.
Yeah, I, I guess what, what makes the charge kind of useful as a, as a, it's almost a ticket to entry, right? If we can have a, a positive and simple charge to the group, you know, to, to be a discussion forum that advises how to, how to accomplish solar siting in the town of Norwich. Then people coming to participate are accepting that as the chart. That's why we're here. So that's, that's your ticket for entry. If you don't agree with, so if we think of it that way when we're crafting that pithy statement, then if somebody is totally obstructionist, you know, doesn't agree with that at all, just wants to, you know, tell us about their vacation plans or something, then clearly they're, they're not, they shouldn't be talking. But within that limit, great.
May I comment? I, for one, am not suggesting that this subcommittee refuse to hear from anybody. My comment was that when the planning commission decides that they want to rewrite the town plan, which is not due for rewriting, but I understand there are good reasons for keeping it up to date. And when they appoint a subcommittee for those purposes, then certainly that subcommittee, just as it is subject to the open meeting law, just as it is subject to all other laws and statutes, ought to recognize that membership on the subcommittee, which I take it is going to be voting on things, but membership on the subcommittee might not be suitable for individuals who have a special interest in the subject that's at hand. Now, we heard tonight that despite the fact that we don't actually have a charter for this committee yet, that the purpose of this enterprise derived from the experiences of the residents of Upper Loveland. And boy, they are really engaged because they've had to hire attorneys. They've had to, you know, that they're distressed about the property values on their homes, which they have expressed many times in public. And that it's naive to think that that is an appropriate membership. I would not think it appropriate to put Troy from Norwich Technologies on this subcommittee. I have oftentimes heard objections to John Langas playing very benign roles in town because he used to work for a company that was engaged in the matter at hand. So it's just kind of puzzling for me to hear, we're not making policy, you know, nobody, that, that there's no substantive policy issue at stake. It's not plausible. And I just hope that the committee and the planning commission, since it's their decision, will be cautious in assigning people to a policymaking subcommittee or policy recommending subcommittee who have a glaring dog in the fight. It's not wrong for them to want to have their views expressed. Of course, they can come to the meetings. This is a public meeting. But how is it appropriate to put them on the, on the committee? I just fail to see it. But I feel like I'm overusing my time and.
Well, so I would just to thank you, Jack. I mean, I think where it sounds like we got to in the last five minutes here was, at least for now, there's no reason to ask for official membership to go beyond the three of us. And, and so that's the status. And, and quite frankly, I don't necessarily see us voting on anything anytime soon. That, that just tones down the whole. And, and then we can be very open and, and inclusive. And, and if we get a specific piece of work, then clearly to Jack's point, there is no question that we, at least the three of us, have, must abide by the town's conflict of interest policy. That, that's, we signed on to that when we joined the planning commission. But, but right now, we're not voting. We're not, so I, we're, we're, we're leaving the membership as it is, is basically how we're addressing agenda item number six.
Thank you, Yon. And I again apologize for being a naturally excitable individual. I don't mean to bring on conflict. Thank you.
But that's exactly the point.
That's, yeah, no, I mean, that's, Jack, you, you just said, that's, you're.
I get it. Thank you.
Your, your emotion, we want anybody's emotion. You know, you've just made us realize that, you know, this, I have no problem with people expressing their, you know, you just, I think you just helped us clarify something that, you know, maybe it should just be the three of us and leave it open to the public. So I have no problem, not at all. And that's what we're hoping to happen.
Well, you're both in very close. Our job of the three of, the, the job of the three of us is to, is to be the conduit into the full planning commission. And, and we are taking extra time to go out and set up a forum and, and learn all the background so that we can be a useful conduit. But we're, we're, it isn't an exclusive club that you're either a member or you're not and so on.
And I just like to, to, to say, just as a, a little extra piece here is, you know, getting people to be good citizens is, is important. And I think what Jim was, was, was pointing out, this is a good place for people to start learning how to be good citizens. And getting, getting young people involved is, is from my point of view, important thing to, to do, to do, to get them to learn how to, to, to be citizens and, and, and to, you know, express themselves clearly and, 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 you know, in, in public and so on, and not be afraid of this process. So I would like to encourage him to encourage anybody, you know? And, and, and it sounds like he could probably sort of help them learn. He himself, sounds like he's in a position to help lead people, how, you know, what the decorum is and stuff like that so that, so that they don't come in, you know, either nervous or, or unprepared or stuff like that, you know, just.
Yeah, Ernie, I'm sorry, can I just ask Ernie a question? So Ernie, how, you know, I, when we discussed doing these subcommittees, you know, the planning commission is kind of overwhelmed, just like the select board. So we, it was, I, I guess maybe, you know, we probably didn't write our preamble first, but there's, I mean, there's no agenda. We're, we're just trying to, to, to do this.
Yeah.
And I guess, what I'm asking is the land use, the land use committee, you, you guys are just taking sections of the land use committee and then the, the, the planning commission is planning on creating other committees because it's a lot to do. And we just want public input. So I, you know, I, I, maybe we should make it clear that you guys that, you know, we're, we're not, we're not on some charge to close down solar siting in Norwich.
Yeah, I, I'm not. Because I'm sorry if I did. It's not what I meant.
Or, or cite solar on the green. I mean, neither, neither extreme burden.
This is just to, to, to start a conversation on, on living documents. And if there are problems, we need to address them and just to discuss it. So Ernie, when you guys went through your land use, land committee, how did you end up opening up your committee members? Have you gotten to that point yet in your organizational meeting?
No, no, we have not.
And I, I. It may be totally different for that committee. I mean, I do think.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think, and I think that's, that's, because when I think of that committee, will be actually, it, it's, it's got a kind of a bigger charge and, and, and less, less specific. And, and you know, and, and, and what it's going to be doing is some actual, for instance, the, the, the solar siting will bring back information to the planning commission. And there will probably be some legislation that will be produced from it. But that will be done by the planning commission. And, and in the, in the land use group, you have some of the people that will be writing, you know, you have three out of the seven people that will do, be doing the legislation on that, on that commission, on, on that subcommittee. And, and so it's a little bit different. But I think also there's some, to some degree, there's also personnel, there are personnel differences compared to this sub, this, this, this subcommittee too. So we'll see how that, that, that works as well.
Yon, you just.
Yeah, Yon.
All right, all right. So I guess I would, I would just call a time check. I, I don't want to set the expectation that we're going to do these things for two or three hours every, every time we meet. So we need, we got a lot to talk about. We just need to bound each meeting so people have a reasonable expectation. So I guess I would ask us to roll towards some agenda items and some, some meeting expectations for next meeting.
Okay, so let's just recap. We've recapped generally input, right, charge in the next meeting, number six, subcommittee membership. We're not going to have a, we're, we're, it's us three. And then there's going to be the public. Is that what we decided?
Yep.
That's what I think.
I think that's a great idea and we will highly encourage membership from all levels of the community. Okay, so we're on seven public comments. Any public comments? My computer froze. Oh, Bob, go ahead, Bob.
You just said membership. I mean, I think maybe you meant participation, public participation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at cities. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we're going to encourage participation. And I think we can talk about it at the next meeting, kind of the follow-up to agenda item five. We can have that, something like that still on the, on the agenda for the next meeting. And we would talk about how to solicit. And it could be a, a note on the listserv to attorney's point. Here's, here's a draft charter. Here's why we're doing it. Here's how we're doing it. We're welcoming participation. We're not looking for members. We're welcoming participation and, and eat the bushes some. And so that's something to talk about at the next meeting.
I'd say a great idea, great idea. So, okay, so are we, so we can't adjourn yet because we're going to, so agenda items for, are we, can we go over agenda? Write that down on our agenda.
So I would say draft, draft charge. We, that, that, that's the, that's one of the first things. And one of the, kind of the only things we need to hang our hats on. So we should, if, if people have ideas to, to throw into the packet before the meeting, then by all means do that and then put it on the agenda to, to craft one. Keep it simple, keep it positive and, and be useful. And let's, let's craft that next meeting.
Okay, so we really only have approval of the general public comment. So we've already selected doctors. So our primary objective, oh, oh, wait, I'm sorry. We haven't determined, and we were, what's, are we going to have a regular meeting? And, and like those, those guys actually requested that we do it during business hours instead of the afternoon? Or after business hours?
No, other, yeah, other way around. So.
Ernie, Yon, you guys have a preference on, you know, the 5:30, 6, 6 o'clock?
6:30.
Yeah, it's, I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather not try to wait dinner for these kind of conversations or you'll. Yeah, it's I'd I'd rather I'd rather not try to wait dinner for these kind of conversations or you'll. You'll lose. From hunger.
What time do you, what what are you thinking?
Six thirty is fine. But if we, so if we look, the next planning commission, we we. We go back to second Tuesday, so it's September. Twelfth is the next planning commission meeting. So and that that means Tuesdays are available. Because we have planning commissions, September twelfth, and then the plan would be October tenth. So that means that leaves quite a few Tuesdays if we want to just. Keep our keep our planning commission Tuesday hat on, we could say. The fifth.
And and the other thing is is that for the. Land use. Subcommittee. I, from what I understand, Tuesdays are actually not going to work for one of the members. So. That that would be good for, you know, for me to have have it on the Tuesday, Tuesday. So that we can. I I find out hopefully tonight whether that's every Tuesday is not is not gonna work or just some Tuesdays or something like that. I'm not quite. What it was.
And we don't have, I mean, Pam requested it, but we don't have to lock into. We're gonna be the first Tuesday of every month for the next six months. It just. But if we said, uh, next meeting on the fifth at six thirty. As a as a placeholder, does that, does that work?
Tuesday.
Labor Day weekend.
I know, Labor Day weekend.
Or the nineteenth.
Or Thursdays. So.
Or the seventh, yeah.
What is this seventh?
It's a Thursday.
Oh, I can't, all right. I don't schedule anything, but once a year and and that I I can't do the seventh, unfortunately, so. There's no voting.
We can do agenda items and and next meeting dates offline by email if we need to. But Bob has his hand up.
Yeah, I, if I can step back just a couple of steps here, the charge for the committee. Is that you're seeing that is something that you come up with? Or do you see that as something the planning commission? Would come up with to give to the subcommittee?
Yeah, well, they asked us to do it. I mean, which I think was to save time in a planning commission meeting. We punted it to the subcommittee. I think it's legitimate for us to draft it. And then as the subcommittee report for the next planning commission meeting, we'd say. We'd stick it in the packet. Here's our draft charter. And the planning commission as a whole would say, yep, looks good, or they'd fiddle with it a little bit, and then we'd then we'd work on it.
So that's a good point. So if we have our next meetings on Su- the September twelfth. So the next Tuesday is what? What's the date of September twelfth? I don't have a calendar in front of me.
The nineteenth, so if you want to meet, I guess, do we want to meet before the next planning commission meeting? Again, do we want another meeting before the next full commission?
Well, no, because we run into Labor Day problems, right?
Okay, so that's fine. So then how about the nineteenth?
Tuesday, the nineteenth. I I just don't, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I I can't tell what's what's, what do we have? Next Tuesday, this, we don't have enough time. If we want to get stuff in the pack. We don't have time for a next Tuesday meeting. And then I think the next Tuesday is the Labor Day problem. And then the next.
Yeah, so it's either get off Tuesday or do the nineteenth.
I'm playing with Tuesdays, Tuesday nineteenth. Now give us time to to throw some stuff in the packet.
I I don't know when I, when when the land use group is planning to have, what next Thursday? I mean, we're having one tonight, so I don't know. When the next, when the next Thursday, we're gonna be having one.
Well, then we can, you guys can tell us at the.
Like that, that, that's what I was gonna suggest, because we could do a Thursday. You know.
That's my dog.
Is your stomach growing? Maybe your stomach is growling there.
Her stomach is growling.
So 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 let me go on with the agenda thing. I know, we're gonna write our charge, but I still kind of after I sort of send this thing out. I'm not sure how to incorporate this. We're gonna write the charge, but I'd like to see it more like a. Like not a. What is syllable? Not a table of contents, but just kind of like the what I was saying, the task force, the task force. You know, wrote their charge and then, you know, what I want to do is sort of discuss once we, what we come up with a charge or if the. Us as the planning commission writer, our chart. Whichever it goes. But it. Time where we can really actually go through. How we're gonna sort of break it down and then, you know, hit each different, like regulatory. Are we up to date on regulatory? Are we up on development? Are we up on all the different points that they, you know, that they brought up? I mean, do we want to do that as part of the agenda?
I think, well, I guess I would ask for the packet. I think my dog, my dog minder has come to take the howling dog away. I think we should. Going back to the background information collection agenda item, we should say. We should feel free to input stuff into the packet for the next meeting. You know, let's let's throw some, you know, PUC, you're obviously the thing you're referring to. You you would want to say that, Chris, put that in, but there may be five other just basic. PUC docs or state regs or whatever. Let's let's put them in the packet.
And so, so would we put that down as an agenda item of review documents submitted to? Is that what we want to do is review?
Put a correspondence in. I didn't have one here because I knew we wouldn't, we wouldn't have gotten that far yet, but have a standing agenda item for correspondence.
Correspondence and then that opens, so if we do put it down as correspondence, then it opens up for discussion, right?
Yes, you could decide how to dispose of your correspondence, which, whether you. Put some into your reference file, act on some, you you have a choice about how to deal with your correspondence.
Okay. And then after. Membership's done, got that, so we're really gonna focus on the charge. Correspondence, is there any other specific thing that we want to just, and and an item that? Like we want to talk about forest block? Or anything specific or 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 the other thing I wanted to do, by the way, is, you know, start looking at. Parts of the town plan and and, you know, just the energy chapter of the town plan and and maybe that could be a topic is that. Our discussion of the town plan, if we've all read it. Start having a a discussion about what elements of the town plan aren't up to date. Regulatory thing and how it's affected. The PUC. And such, so.
And I think to. To to sequence this logically so that we aren't diving into. Real deep too soon. I, there is an overall. Basically, the plan and regs. Uh, you know, overview, because, for example, the ridgeline maps. Are part of the regulate, are the zoning rings. It's not the town plan. And so you, but you, we want to put little flags, basically little boxes around things that say, we're gonna want to talk about. This, this, we're gonna want to talk about this piece of the town plan, this piece of the reg, so. It's a legitimate starting point. I just don't want to tunnel down into. The the nuances of exact language anytime soon, but we want to get a list. We want to get a list. We want to start generating a list of regs and plan pieces that are worth talking about.
So how would we write that down as an agenda item? Do we want to just talk about sort of the town plan as a general?
Overall review, uh, overall review of plan and regs. Topics or something. I mean, it it's it's fine to be, especially in this kind of a forum, it's fine to be pretty general. And I would still leave on generating input. Uh, because just the topic of should we do a list or post that that beats the bushes a little bit, you know, that's. That's an agenda topic of how do we generate particip- call it participation. Skip input, that's, that's too one way. Put, you know, generating public participation.
Yeah, so that generating participation and and can we go back to that and and can we address? I mean, I know this is sort of, this was supposed to be a sort of organizational meeting, but. Is it too soon for us to to actually put a post? Before this next meeting or do we?
I would rather, I. I'd rather. Talk it through a little bit more. I just think we can kerfluffle the whole place if we. Start using, the the listserv is a blunt instrument and we have to be careful. How we use it. So I wouldn't want to.
Okay, so.
Let's serve in the last two minutes of a two hour meeting.
So it's how to engage, so so we have. Write a charge, correspondence, overall review of town plan and regulations, right? Or how, how is that, you were sort of?
Over overview of. Plan and reg topics. Uh, and then, uh, you can, I mean, you can have an agenda item that's just, you know, methods to encourage participation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how to engage, methods to. Methods to engage. That's great, so. Rate charge correspondence overview. An overview review of town plan and reg topics, topics, not the whole.
Yeah, I I just, I think we just generate a a list and it's gonna be six. Clearly, the default solar, preferred solar is one and and the ridgeline maps or scenic maps are, you know, they're gonna be six or seven that are the highlights. Of what we then want to. Put on a subsequent agenda for more detailed review.
Okay, and then the last one would be methods to engage public participation.
Yep, yep.
And that's Tuesday, the nineteenth at six thirty.
Thirty, so then the last question would be, do we want to try for hybrid? We can get the room and the camera stuff that we use for full commission meetings and whoever wants to go to Tracy can go to Tracy.
So if we don't have our, or if we haven't really. The public or let the public know that we're doing this yet, I almost think that to zoom is fine, but if we, once we start. Maybe getting more public participation, it might be necessary to do a hybrid.
So you want to do one more zoom only and then we'll go from there?
I would.
I I would, I would prefer that simply because. Um, I'd like, the the. It it should be one, I I'm not real happy, comfortable with the hybrid thing and and I don't, I'm not quite, I I can't remember why we. Doing remote, you know, park or hybrid.
It's most, it's it's me, if nothing else, from the point of view of of. Life with COVID, I have limitations, so that's that's one of the drivers of.
Uh, so that that's fair. I just didn't understand, but the thing is, is that since it's just the three of us. I'd stick with, um, let's, let's keep it remote. Because, you know, and and I mean. If we have any indications, I think that people want to start, you know, people want to. Participate, you know, in person. Um, you know, I don't have, I have no, I don't know how to set that stuff up myself, and I take guests that. Chris doesn't either. Um, and there's only three of us.
No offense, but Vince, Vince caught on pretty quick and.
But he's an engineer.
How hard can it be? No. But I, yeah, I agree, and I'm fine, and if if what we're trying to do is. Really make it easy for somebody to chime in and make it easy for somebody to listen to us in the background and then chime in. When they think of something, then I think I think Zoom, Zoom only might be a good forum for a little while here. And then it's just soliciting written input and packet input and so forth.
So Bob, your hand up?
Well, we're just gonna point out how much time setting up the hybrid. Kills, uh, I mean, every select board meeting that I've seen so far, at least the first twenty five minutes are.
Well, and I might point out that that's actually a big credit to Vince because we don't have that with the planning commission. Vince nails it every time. I think the difference is partly that they are simultaneously YouTube. Pub- publishing out. We don't do that. We do, we do hybrid and then we do the recording later. It's only Zoom. There's no YouTube involved. So that makes it simpler, but kudos to Vince.
Sorry, so I have a question about that. We're doing a Zoom recording, so what happens to it? Does it go to a YouTube site or something, or what, what is this?
Automatically, the the logistics are that the planning commission's Zoom account. Automatically records and has a repository that Pam knows where it is. It it's on the account as if about. Ten hours after this happens, I can click on the recorded tab of my Zoom and it will have that meeting. Sitting there. It's a, you know, a fifty five megabyte file, and so then Pam goes in, she finds that and she puts it on the website.
So the only reason I bring that up is that I I actually, you know, this is a. I'm just sort of floating on this idea for us, but I would love to see the select board do it, or not the select board, but other meetings. Is that when we send out our minutes to the public on the listener? I would love it if Pam linked. The Zoom, because a lot of people look at the minutes and then like, oh, God, where am I gonna find it? Do I do YouTube? I just, I'm just wondering if she can't put a link to the to the Zoom meeting.
Oh, we can, no, yes, I I think I I, we can. Yeah, the Zoom is available soon enough that the link can be included in the minutes and still make your five day. Uh, turnaround. So I I think as a matter of course, we can do that.
Yeah, just right. And again, it's just for the ease of the public to, you know, not have to file through or rifle through.
Yeah.
I just had a question about. Uh, shoot, I had a question about. Oh, minutes right now, so. Jan, do I have a correct, you've been, you've got the minutes?
I will do minutes. And then I'll, and so I will try with Pam to to do that link to the to the video. And then we can talk to Vince about doing that with the full commission meetings. Uh, so that he just checks with Pam. All you got to do is get a link from Pam, uh, before the minutes are sent out.
Yeah, and you know, in in other meetings I've been in, you know, especially with just the three of us. I'm more than willing to rotate on the, so nobody feels obligated to always be the minute taker.
Okay, we can talk about that next meeting. I would throw out a motion to adjourn if we want to.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, good stuff, really good stuff. Let's see ya.
Fun with the land use, Ernie.